Are you going to read that?
Wall eyes. And I find to the blue.
Can I look at yours?
This used to be like the council producer.
Do you want to look at this?
Five, four, dun, dun, dun.
Oh, it says on air.
We're on air.
Isn't it nice to see?
Ooh, nice.
It's changing. Port right drive is off.
Morning, Betty.
Hello. Where's, where's Michael at?
Uh, she said he's running just a little bit late, but he'll be here.
Very nice.
I didn't even ask you, are you okay?
Did you have your shaping spoken yet? The housing program?
I take it back, I did have that meeting in town. All the different things, it's always like something Spokane.
Well, yeah.
You know, and then you're like.
Well, and it's a little repetitive, though. We've seen this. It's good. More, I mean, more familiarity with it than the better. If I'm with them, trying, I mean, right, because they're trying to like set up a package to come to us.
Yeah.
It'll get better.
Don't just come into us and be like, no vote.
Okay. We'll probably wait for him. No, we can wait for him.
I had a question for you. I can't remember.
I'll be here afterwards.
I think it was easy.
Then the answer is yes.
Ian said yes. He said I can do it.
All right.
Yeah. Ask, like, ask me one more time.
Lori comes back, both start if he's not here.
Beat Michael by a minute. Good for you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll let you take a breath. No worries.
What's that?
We'll let you take a breath.
Thank you.
What?
I had to shave for fire ops fitting thing I did this morning, so.
Baby face.
It's gonna grow back.
It's gonna grow back, I'm told.
All right, are people ready? Good morning, everybody, welcome to the Spokane City Council Study Session for this week. We have three things on our agenda. First is the Joint Plan Commission Meeting that we have about once a quarter. We've got some folks in person and online. And then we, Monday afternoon, we decided to have a discussion about the new shelter idea and invite some members from the COC Board to come talk with us. And, and since then, Councilmember Kinnear has worked on a resolution that can help guide the RFP process. And then we also have a short discussion about another resolution to participate in the Rapid Capital Acquisition Program that we have applied for in the past, but now there's more money, including for operations, and so we want to make a clear record of that so that we can apply for those funds as well. So, we'll start with the Plan Commission. We've got Chair Beiru there here, we've got some Commission Members here, I saw Jesse Bank on the screen, I'm not sure who else, and we also have Plan Director Spencer Gardner. This will be the first joint Commission Meeting, I think you've come to. And so, this is really our chance to talk about whatever we all want to talk about, but I'd like to start with the Plan Commission and find out issues you want to talk about, so invite Todd up for a moment.
Should we do introductions?
Okay, and before you say anything, let's, why don't you, go ahead, come up, but why don't you introduce who's here with you today?
Okay, thank you, Council, nice to see you. Been a while since I've testified to, to Council here. Todd Beiru, so we have Mary Winkus, Tim. Williams, thank you. Right, and this is the first time we've been in person, so.
Okay.
Thank you, we have two or three new Commissioners this, this year, so it's, as you know, ongoing, ongoing process of, of education and learning, but we are almost at full strength and nine people, and I think we have an application for ten, so thank you for all your support and, and keeping those numbers up, and it is much easier to do this job with nine or 10 people than in the past when we've had five or six, so.
Right. Well, what, I mean, and we don't have to start them yet, but let's find out what top things you would like to discuss or hear from us on.
Sure, thank you. Oh, as you know, and first of all, we, we also welcome, you know, the new Planning Director, and it's, it's been a great transition in, in collaboration with the department, so really feeling strong about that. Really feeling strong about, of course, the, a lot of the amendments that are, are coming through, and you, you will now start to see one, you know, including ADU so forth, which just passed through the Commission last, last week, so I believe you'll, you'll hear that soon. I think we, as we've discussed in the past, are constantly trying to find this, this balance of what are, how can we contribute more as, as a Commission, and in that area, it's, it's not only helping the department and the consistency of, of some of these, of these, you know, I'm gonna call them incremental, not, not by, for any judgment, but just incremental amendments to our, our, our code, our development code, but also then the, the bigger lifts of looking forward and aligning with state level and other, you know, national trends in, in, in housing in particular. So I think that's the main one that we'd like to bring forward to you, and specifically how we, if, if we, if we see the Commission as, you know, one of many stewards of, of the comprehensive plan, how can we start that work, you know, now? And we've been trying for two or three years of really getting in there and not waiting for the 2026, you know, periodic update, but we really want to tackle some of these issues, and I think specifically, as we've discussed during the Housing Action Plan process, was we're ready to, to, to help inform the, the land use segment, especially with our neighborhoods, and really start that public conversation around land use. And so I think we have a good strategy in place, we've worked closely with the, the Department and, and Director Gardner, and specifically, we would like to propose that within our rules, we have the ability to form a subcommittee. You know, I, I say that with caution because, you know, we can committee ourselves to death, but specifically, one that is targeting LU 1.3 and 1.4 and, and, and really bringing that to the surface and looking for consistency of tho, that policy with the other policies within the land use, with, within the comprehensive plan, I think that's an important task of this subcommittee. And the other one is looking at the effectiveness of, of whatever is proposed, and by that meaning the development feasibility, so how, how do we really get technical and wonky on understanding how to open, open up that opportu, those opportunities for other housing typologies?
Great. I'm gonna invite Director Gardner up just to talk a little bit about the work plan. Often, we talk about that, but I know he, in his short time here, has been thinking about expanding the work, the time horizon on the work plan from beyond just a year. So Spencer, if you wanted to just kind of share with Council your ideas on that, and then we can maybe turn to the work plan as currently proposed, and then we'll get back to that question of that conversation of how can the Planning Commission really work with Council to move things forward, I think, really? And Council's gonna have the same, and Spencer and his team are gonna have the same, so I think it, this year is gonna be a particularly productive year, so, but Spencer?
Well, we hope it's a productive year, for sure.
Yeah.
So the work plan in its current form, which we emailed out yesterday, it's, it's been around for a while, Plan Commission actually sort of settled on this draft version. I hope you have copies, and I emailed it to you. Plan Commission came together at the end of the year to settle on this draft version. At the ti, so typically, we would come to Council, and by resolution, Council would adopt the work program so that all sides are kind of on board with what's going on. Because I didn't start until February, the feeling was that it would make sense to wait until I'm here, they didn't want to make a decision that would tie my hands for the coming year. So, the version that was sent to you is the version that Plan Commission heard at the end of the year. I haven't tried to make any changes to it, but since it has not been adopted by Council yet, you have the opportunity to discuss, and I know we've had some discussions about additional things that might make sense here. There's also some projects that are on the list that we've since made some progress on and maybe can fall off the list because they're in the final stages. So I, I don't know if you want any more background there, or?
Could you talk a little bit about going forward, assuming we do a resolution and, enact a version of this for this year? But you've discussed with me how it might be helpful in the future to have two or three year time horizon, and then we update it every year so that better reflects projects that cross over calendar years, if you could just kind of share.
Yeah, so one problem that I'm hearing, just as, as we've talked about the work plan internally, is that we have a lot of projects that span multiple years, and so having to go through the, the full work plan process every year feels like a lot of, I guess, administrative burden that we end up sort of just keeping a lot of the same things on there anyway. In the past, there has been discussion, and I think it was tried several years ago, to move to more of a biannual work program. I don't, we, internally, we don't really have a strong opinion about what that looks like exactly, we're just kind of having that conversation amongst ourselves, and would be interested in hearing your input on that as well. One of the things that I'm doing as time permits, which is a challenge these days, is to develop a, I guess, a strategic plan for the department, to understand what are sort of the high level, what's the high level vision for the department, broken out into several categories or subjects that are at kind of core to what we do as a department. I feel like that strategic plan could be sort of the overarching multi-year vision for the department, within which a work program can kind of shift on an annual basis or a biannual basis, or, there's no reason that we couldn't amend the work program mid-year if something appropriate comes up. So that's kind of the vision that I've had.
Yes. Councilmember Kinnear, I think, was first.
So Spencer, great idea, and thinking kind of a hybrid, and Todd, you can weigh in on this too, so a hybrid of, you know, we, we don't have to do this plan every year, and we could do one for two or three years. How long did Woodstock's way take? Not, don't say 20. It took a long time.
It took a long time.
Years and years to change the name of a street, of a, you know, it was important, and it took a long time. And so, we can put those items that are gonna take longer in one category, but then leave room so that we can add and take off things as they, as they develop and they are voted on and they go forward, but then leave room so that as things come up during the year, there's room for the Plan Commission to consider them. And sometimes, at the beginning of the year, we don't know what we're gonna be, as a Council, what we're gonna be interested in or working on, things come up based on what the community tells us. And I didn't know, for example, that I was gonna be working on a historic preservation ordinance, and then all of a sudden Brown's Edition came up and said, "Help us." So I started that work in the middle of the year, well after your Plan Commission, well after the Plan Commission's work plan was voted on, so I'd like to leave some, some wiggle room, I think that would be helpful. Do you, what do you think?
Yes, thank you, and I, I think, you know, I think this document is, obviously it's required, but it's also probably most helpful to the, the department. You know, I think from a Plan Commission standpoint, you know, our ability to work with the department on consistency items, and that, and this is typically reflected that, but we also have more capacity to, to do other projects that might originate from, from the Council directly and explore certain areas, so I think that's a valid point, and in that sense, we'd like that to be more dynamic.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Councilmember Schrein.
So I just have a, I think it's an easy question, so as I look at the program priorities, and I go down to notes, so when we talk about there are a few neighborhoods that have remaining plans that need to be pushed out and completed, so how do we, how does that fit in for Minnehaha, Shiloh Hills, Balboa, Leighton, Hangman? How does that work? How do we plop those neighborhood plans into this schedule?
Yeah. I mean, they are, they are included there as notes, there's been sort of ongoing conversation about how to accommodate those neighborhood plans within the schedule. I think part of the conversation between Council and Plan Commission and the neighborhoods and the department is where do those neighborhood plans fall within the list of priorities here, here on the, the work program? I think the, the trouble with priorities is that you have to choose the most important ones, and it's not, you know, the department doesn't want to be dictating to you what's important to Council and Plan Commission, that's not our job. So, we, we just want to make sure that those neighborhood plans get done, and I've had some conversations with a couple of Council Members, you know, about how we feel like we can develop a strategy going forward, and, you know, certainly welcome any other conversation if somebody wants to grab me and we can talk.
I appreciate that, thanks.
We are, I'll just mention one idea I had, because, so there is money set aside for those plans, at least for three of them. Shiloh Hills was part of another neighborhood that did get its plan and then broke off afterwards, so I don't know if the money is set aside for them, but the other three, they are, and Shiloh, I, I believe we should do one for Shiloh Hills, so don't get me wrong, but the money might not be there. But I have, you know, that money, it's not very much money per plan, and I don't know how much it's gonna buy from a consultant, so one of the ideas I've had is maybe putting an RFP out to our local universities that have planning programs, and trying to leverage a lot more person hours using college students to do that, to really do that. So that, it's like be a different way than we've done it in the past, but we haven't sat down with the neighborhood councils yet and their leadership, and I want, I'm, I think we're trying to get that on the books and find out, hey, are, are you open to this? We'll get you way more hours, and we'll probably be able to do it sooner, are you open to that? Not to force it, but to see if they're interested, because this has been a bit of a logjam every year, it doesn't quite get there. And then it looks worse and worse, and these poor neighborhoods are like, well, we certainly don't rate, and I don't think it's meant that way, but yeah. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I would just say, I, I certainly am open to that idea, I would like to talk to the neighborhoods, make sure they're comfortable with it too. If they're not, or if we need something different, I wonder, is there an opportunity for one of these larger, you know, more mandated things to contract that out and then do the neighborhood plans in-house instead? So, but however, we have to get them done, I think we, we need to.
Councilmember Bingo.
Yeah, I think it's a fantastic idea, I think we have such a wealth of knowledge in our, in our city with our university system, and so tapping into, you know, the future professionals that are gonna be running our city, I, I think it's a great idea, and I hope that we do it, because I think, I know for them, real world experience is really good, they do have much professional oversight to make sure that it's not a bad job, but it's done well, I, I think it's a great idea, yeah.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
So I support that also, but also, some of those neighborhood plans were written where those neighbors are long gone, and the current neighborhood has no idea, from the people who wrote a plan for their neighborhood, that they had absolutely no input into. So it could be a hybrid of college students for plans that are already existing and they need a refresh or engagement, and on a professional level, for the plans that have not been written at all yet, how we can go forward, so it would give us opportunities across the board.
Great point. Councilmember Cathcart.
So, different topic from the neighborhood plans, the, Todd mentioned LU 1.3 and 1.4, I, I thought those were in progress right now, being reviewed, but it's not on the work plan, so is that, is that kind of under, like, one of the categories, it's just sort of a subcategory and it's not listed?
It's not listed currently, this version of the work program was what was discussed at the end of December, so we have not, I know we brought that forward to Council to talk about, and Plan Commission's been talking about it, we have not included it as a line here, but certainly we can add it.
Yeah, I, I strongly believe that that needs to be a, a high priority for, for the work plan. And I've got one other that I think we need to add as well, and I'll wait and bring that up here in a second.
Do you see, Plan Commissioner Winkus wants to speak?
No, thank you. Mary, come on up.
Well, as the lay is on, from the Community Assembly on the Plan Commission, I, I'll do anything to help, if you just, I'd be glad to do whatever's needed to work to get those plans farther up the list and something done, because this is something that's been talked about for upwards of 20 years, and they're still not done, so, and every time I get a chance to mention it, I'm sure they're sick of it, I bring it up, so I will be happy to do whatever I can to help out, so just wanted to let you know, thanks.
Great, and also I had a note that Vice Chair of the Plan Commission, Greg Fanchess, is also joining us remotely. So I think, so we're, in a moment, we'll get to, okay, how can we accelerate the work to increase housing inventory, so we'll get to that in a minute, but now I think is a good time to have any other discussion about work plan issues, either adding, subtracting, changing, and then based on that, we'll come up with a resolution to adopt a, a final one and come forward. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so the one that I think we should have a conversation around, and it's, it's a, an issue that we'll be talking about later in our study session, but I think it's important that we talk about it now, is this idea of tiny homes and pallet, pallet shelters, pallet homes. And so I think what we need to do is add to the work plan a tiny lot development code, citywide tiny lot development code. I don't think we should, you know, one of the big issues is we, we make it really expensive to build housing in not just the city, but the state, and so there's a lot of codes that would have to be suspended, I think, in order to accommodate these tiny homes as they've been presented, and I just think that we should allow more of our community members to have access to inexpensive housing, and we shouldn't limit it to one group, one special interest, one, one lot, one anything. So I think we should have a citywide tiny lot discussion and figure out how we can accommodate these types of micro homes, or whatever they're, they're being called, and, you know, because there's a lot of things, there's, there are gonna be energy codes that they're not following, there's building codes they're not following, there's land use codes they're not following, they, you know, they don't have bathrooms in them, which is typically required, so there's a lot of things that we will have to be suspending, and I think that there's a lot of community members who would love the opportunity to, to access really inexpensive housing. And so I am proposing that we would add to our work plan a tiny lot development code that would be citywide, and then they can bring it back to us, and then we can figure out how to implement that.
And just for clarification, so, because different, you know, there's a pallet house term, there's a tiny home term, so one version of tiny homes, they do have a bathroom and a kitchen, they have running water, that's one kind of, and then there are these pallet ones that don't, I mean, there are no, no running water, no bathroom, you're talking about both, I'm assuming, but they're not necessarily identical.
The ones that have been, I guess, presented locally in the news media, don't have bathrooms, don't appear to have running water, none of that, so.
Yeah, so for both of them.
Yeah.
Councilmember.
So, good idea, we kind of have a version of that, which is our cottage housing, and Nate has worked on that tirelessly, right? So we have a version of that, I don't think we need to start from scratch, I think that we could take what Nate's worked on and expand it, or tweak it, or massage it to make it work, and Councilmember Wilkerson and I were contacted by the City of Vancouver, they are using the pallets that you're describing in different locations for people who, and we're gonna have this discussion later, I know, going off on a tangent here, but they were so enthused about these pallet homes because they've been, how long have they been using them? About a year, right?
Year, almost two.
Almost two years, and they've been working wonderfully in Vancouver, Washington, because it's a smaller community, you're not cramming a lot of people into one space, so I think there's an opportunity, and Nate, you're probably in, you're probably slammed with work, I know, but maybe just pass along some of the information you had to us on the work that you did, cottage housing stuff, as a starting point.
Yeah, well, it, you know, I mean, and it's, I think what's being proposed is very different from, from cottage housing, but it certainly can be a starting point. You know, I think cottage housing still has a much larger minimum lot size, you know, we're talking 60 square feet minimum lot size for, for these tiny pallet shelters, so it's a substantially different model of housing. But, but yeah, I mean, we can, we can start from there, but I do think that this is something that we should come back with a, a real thoughtful approach on how we're gonna do this citywide, and then we can, we can approve something later this year.
Okay, so we've had two suggestions, one is the LU 1.3, 1.4, that has come up since this draft was prepared, and then we've got the tiny lot discussion for pallet housing. Other things that anyone's wanting to get on the 2022 plan? Or changes?
I'll probably think of something next month.
Okay, well, yeah, it hasn't been dropped yet, so we'll, we'll, we'll do it. Anything else from Plan Commission, anyone that thinks should be on the work plan? Okay, all right, great.
Council President, I just have to ask them, I know they are saying they're, at least the Planning Commission's almost up to its full capacity, we continue to ask if planning has capacity and staffing to continue to do all the work that we keep adding to them, so I know we've dedicated some money through ARPA for some special projects, but I continue to ask them, do they have the resources, and Spencer's standing up, to really meet the challenges that we keep pushing their way?
So capacity's a perpetual issue, that's not unique to our department, there's just always more work than we have people to do it. We are actively hiring for our two associate planner positions, so we will, we hope to make some progress on those very soon. Those are internal promotion positions, which means that we will have two assistant planner positions that we will fill as soon as we've moved people up into those roles. So that will be two additional planners as a result of that. We also have the principal planner position, Louis's old position, that's in civil service right now, I don't have a timeline on, for, on when that's gonna get filled. We're in the process of hiring possibly three temp seasonal workers, students, to just work part-time over the summer. So we, we are adding some capacity, I think, and we've had discussions about this, one of the, one of the areas that we are really lacking capacity the most is economic development. So that's a, those are positions that we used to have, and they've just kind of evaporated or moved elsewhere, I don't, that wasn't, that was before my time, so I'm not sure what happened to all of those, but we, we are very, very under capacity there, and I, I think we've talked with all of you at various points about Terry's work in economic development, and she's kind of taking that on all by herself right now, so that's, I think, the, the biggest capacity need. As we add these planner positions, or hire the planners into the positions that are unfilled currently, I think that will give us some additional capacity to work on some of what we've talked about, and then we'll have to kind of see from there what the needs are.
Great. I'm just looking at the list, and one of the things that's on the list already is a short-term rental ordinance, which is on the list, but there is no time, and I think we're eager to get that moving. I also, I'm not seeing it, I might just not be seeing it, but I know that when you mentioned Terry Stripe, she is working on the update to the MFTE ordinance, maybe it's on there, but I'm not seeing it, but that's already in progress, and then we also approved ARPA-funded sub-area planning, so I'm just making notes of those.
Can I, can I make a comment on the MFTE? So the, the work program that you're hearing is really to direct the work of the Plan Commission?
Right.
Since Plan Commission doesn't have to consider MFTE changes, that's not something that's, that's off of our radar, it's just not something Plan Commission has to hear?
Perfect, that's the kind of clarification we need, I'll cross that out. Okay, anything else? else on the work plan that anyone wants to discuss? Anyone online? Use your, Hannah Lee will look for hand raise function, if there's anyone that has that. All right, then let's switch to the bigger question that the Chair brought up, which is, okay, how do we add to our code, and how do we get in alignment with state law to essentially increase housing inventory, which is in short supply? And so, I'll first invite any Plan Commission members, if they have any thoughts that they want to bring to the table, and then we'll turn it over to council members, and then I'll give a chance for Mr. Gardner, if anyone.
Okay, thank you, Council President. I think I would frame it as, you know, we, our commission, we paid close attention and appreciate also the invitation to, you know, contribute during the legislative session this year. So, as you know, there was a lot of movement through the committees on these housing issues, and particularly addressing, you know, housing typologies is what we're really talking about when we talk about LU 1.3 especially, what is allowed within our city. So, I think what I would report is, we see a lot of, maybe not consensus, but convergence on solutions. So, we're eager in that, in that format of that subcommittee to actively work as a volunteer group. And we're modeling this after, you know, I also am honored to serve on the State Building Code Council, and in that, our technical advisory groups, you know, are committee-like, but include multiple stakeholders. So, our vision here is to really drive hard and invite stakeholders into this, into this process at a focus committee level.
Great. Actually, I'm going to ask Spencer to come back up and talk a little bit of our conversation that we had in terms of a new term that they're using in the Tacoma code, and then also just some of your, just a bit of an overview of where we're going. We passed the Housing Action Implementation Plan that council put together last year to add to the Housing Action Plan. And now, those, I think we're about to get a tranche of proposals in a couple of weeks. But if you could just kind of give us a little bit of an overview of things that might need a comp plan amendment, which we can only do once a year, might need Plan Commission, other things that can be done. So, just a little bit of an overview of what you're seeing out there, and then I'll get council's input.
Sure. Is this one on? Do I have to move the mouse? Are you hearing me?
Not really.
There we go. That's better.
Yeah, now we can.
Now we can.
Okay. Man, they really need to raise this thing. Okay. I put together just a very short presentation. Council President Beggs and I had a conversation yesterday, and he suggested that it might be helpful for me to run through a couple of things that, I think these conversations have been around, but we've not really had them in a structured way. So, let's see if it's going to let me advance here. I just want to talk a little bit about what we've been up to currently, and this is going to be very, very quick overview. I think most of you have seen this at this point. We're working through some existing code amendments. We're calling those our Phase 1 code amendments. And those are the accessory dwelling units, the short plat, the lot size transition. Those are kind of the three that are moving ahead right now. Sort of the medium-term Phase 1.1, or whatever you want to label it, includes consideration of duplexes and townhouses, townhomes, and how to expand those as viable housing options. So, we're going to, the expectations that Plan Commission will have hearing on those first three items on May 11th. And we've had pretty extensive public engagement around this. And I want to emphasize that this is just the engagement for these specific code amendments. So, you can see the list here. We've been at the Spring Market, hopefully some of you have stopped by there and seen our booth. But this is actually not the, you know, November 18th Land Use Subcommittee or November 10th Plan Commission. That's not the start of this conversation, and I think it's really important for us to acknowledge that. This conversation has been going on for a long time, and I think the most recent formal conversation around this was the Housing Action Plan. So, it's, we really need to recognize that there has been an ongoing, consistent public conversation around housing issues. And so, as we get to more specific recommendations, including LU 1.3, LU 1.4, this is not the first time that these conversations are showing up in the community. I just want to make that really clear. So, what we're working on is following sort of these guiding documents, the Comprehensive Plan, the Housing Action Plan, council's implementation plan, and then the mayor's proclamation of a housing emergency. That sets the stage here. And just to illustrate, we're talking about really a continuum of housing types. That's our code amendments. So, now we're going to shift gears a little bit. I've put up here on the screen LU 1.3. Like I said, this is not the first time the community's talking about this. I think in the eyes of, so, coming out of Plan Commission, and this then came before you to council, I think the concern expressed by Plan Commission is that the focus on single-family residential as a housing type creates some confusion around what we mean when we're talking about those types of neighborhoods. I think you could call them low-density or low-scale neighborhoods. But in a lot of those existing neighborhoods, the detached, single-family house type is not necessarily the exclusive house type in, in those existing neighborhoods, and may not be what the city wants to, I guess, enshrine in policy going forward. Okay, so, that's LU 1.3. LU 1.4 really focuses on directing those higher-density residential uses to centers and corridors. So, this is the backbone of the centers and corridors, I guess, strategy that's outlined in the Comprehensive Plan. And I think the feeling there on the part of Plan Commission, and I think some of the Plan Commissioners could speak to this better than I, because I wasn't around at the time, the feeling there is that, again, that there's sometimes confusion around what we mean when we're talking about directing higher density, and does that mean that we don't allow growth outside of those corridors at all? Does that mean that that growth looks different outside of those corridors? I think that's sort of the conversation that they've been trying to have. I'm going to skip forward here to, I think, a related subject. So, this is in the RCW's 3678-600. So, the state legislature has, in recent years, really made a concerted effort to encourage the development of more housing generally. But also, there's an interest in a variety of housing in all places. And so, they, this section of code is really geared towards creating opportunities for cities to do that. So, that sort of undergirds the whole discussion that we're having about housing density and housing choice. Okay, so LU 1.3 and LU 1.4, I think, have, in recent history on the part of the Planning Department, been interpreted very conservatively. And I don't want to make a value judgment about that. All I want to say about that is I think there's, there's a political question wrapped up in that. What does the community want? And we've, we've not done a good job of fostering that conversation because we've just kind of assumed that because LU 1.3 and LU 1.4 say what they say, that's the end of the discussion. So, I wanted to highlight a few other areas of the plan that I think create opportunities for a larger conversation around housing. So, this is an example, LU 1.1 neighborhoods. And the quote at the bottom, "A variety of compatible housing types are allowed in a neighborhood. The housing assortment should include higher-density residences, small-scale apartments, townhouses, duplexes, and rental units." So, again, just highlighting some policies that introduce into that, into the conversation, some different forms of housing besides just the typical detached, single-family home. LU 3.6, compact residential patterns, allow more compact and affordable housing in all neighborhoods in accordance with the design guidelines. LU 3.7, maximum and minimum lot sizes. So, again, the quote, "One of the ways to use remaining usable land more efficiently is to increase the overall housing density. Increased density promotes efficient and cost-effective provision of city facilities, services, and transportation systems, and enables the provision of affordable housing." This is part of the Comprehensive Plan where we describe the land use designations that cover parts of the city. In our residential 4 to 10 category, it talks about the allowed structure types and includes references to duplexes and also other types of housing, other residential structure types. Socioeconomic integration, this is in the housing section. Mixed-income housing, this is also in the housing section. And then, a distribution of housing options. So, the conversation that I had, and again, we're back to the legislature trying to encourage cities to create more housing options and create housing generally, I just wanted to emphasize that there, there's actually a lot in the Comprehensive Plan that gives us some freedom to talk about housing choice in all neighborhoods. And I think, as a planning director now, I'm, I think I'm maybe a little more open to those conversations than they have been in the past. And again, I don't want to make a value judgment there. I think this is just sort of my perspective on things coming into the position. So, I hope that sets the stage, and that kind of covers everything.
Could you discuss one more thing that we discussed, which was the immunity that the city has for making some changes now under the legislature that might be in conflict with Comprehensive Plans? So, if you could.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I would necessarily characterize it as a conflict. I think this goes back to the conservative interpretation and maybe a more broad interpretation when we're looking at the Comprehensive Plan. And Mr. Richmond, if he's here, could probably speak better to this than me. What, what the RCW does is it prohibits certain actions on the part of a city that are designed to increase housing choice and housing supply from being appealed to the Growth Management Act Board. The Growth Management Act Board would typically hear an appeal if there's a concern that you are passing building or development code that's in conflict with your Comprehensive Plan, for example. I think, actually, the genesis for this legislation was, was from the experience in Seattle, where they had their housing and livability, HALA, whatever the acronym ended up meaning, where they were trying to expand the housing choice. And it got bogged down in years of lawsuits. So, the legislature, recognizing that lawsuits were essentially a way to kind of prevent change from happening, has strengthened the position of cities to be more expansive in their interpretation of their Comprehensive Plans, as I've described here. So, that's, that's what we were talking about earlier.
Okay.
Councilmember Kinnear.
So, can we pivot then? This is, I think, a perfect setup for talking about what Council President mentioned, which was the Tacoma, what Tacoma's doing. Because Jacobi and I have been researching that and trying to integrate helpfully, hopefully integrate that into what we're, what we're doing now in terms of housing. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and move over here now, just, that way the cameras can look at all of our beautiful faces. So, Tacoma, I think there's a couple of things we can learn from Tacoma. One is that they've already gone through the process of rethinking their version of 1.3, 1.4. And so, they renamed their lower-density, or what they call low-scale neighborhoods, as low-scale residential neighborhoods. I think just the act of removing the reference to single-family as a housing type is probably a positive step for us. And again, the emphasis then is on the scale of development in the neighborhood and not the actual housing type. So, that's one change that Tacoma made. Another one that I think holds a lot of promise for us, and I, I think we're still having discussions internally, and I'm happy to have conversations with you, Tacoma has done pilot projects around infill development. And I know this was a bullet point that came out of the implementation portion of the Housing Action Plan that council put forward, was to have pilot programs for different housing types in single-family neighborhoods. So, that would follow kind of the Tacoma model. What they did was, they opened up all their neighborhoods to certain, what we would call higher-density housing types, like four-unit and maybe even in some cases, six-unit apartment buildings. But they did it on a conditional basis and limited it to a certain number, so that they could have some parameters within the process to ensure that you didn't have one neighborhood that was overwhelmed with new development that really changed the character of the neighborhood, but that allowed for the city and for developers to start testing out some of these concepts and figuring out how to make them compatible with existing neighborhoods. Is that, is that the part of Tacoma that you were referring to?
Yeah, and we also talked about transition zones to help with the impact of higher-density versus lower-density. So, there is that transition.
That's right.
That helps. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, one of our existing projects that's just getting kicked off is actually, we're hoping to use that as an opportunity to explore the transition zones, and that's our North Monroe Corridor. So, the idea of transition zone is, we have our centers and corridors, and then we have everything else. And the problem is, when you designate the center, you're saying, let's get high-density development here. But then, surrounding it is all just the lowest-density residential development, and so, you're not really allowing the surrounding area to take advantage of that investment, both the private investment and the public investment that goes into our corridors. And so, the transition zones would allow for us to scale up from those lowest-scale residential neighborhoods to sort of something mid-scale, and then up to the full-on center and corridor type.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so, I've looked at Tacoma a little bit. I don't know all the, kind of the, what has resulted from their pilot exactly. But my concerns are, I guess, a couple, and I'm open to the idea, but I, I think we have to think about, one, you know, we have a pretty huge need right now. I mean, we're 30,000, you know, as estimated, units behind. And so, a pilot allowing just a few projects, you're really going to have a very tiny dent in what our need is. And if this is going to supplant, you know, the attached housing ordinance that's being worked on right now, then I really worry that we're essentially just kicking the can even further down the road, because it's going to take years to catch up, if that's what we end up doing. The other is, how do you decide between winners and losers? And so, if you're going to say, we're only going to allow six projects, or 12 projects, or whatever it is, and if there happens to be a big demand and folks wanting to participate, how are you going to decide who gets to go forward with their project? Which neighborhood gets a project or doesn't get a project? How are you going to decide the winners and losers of that? And, and how do we make sure that we're getting enough capacity built to address the 30,000 units that we've needed for the last 10 years?
Yeah. So, your second question, I think, is excellent. And if this is a project that we move ahead with, and I think that would be input from council and Plan Commission on whether that's a direction we want to move, those are the kinds of questions I think we would need to answer. Tacoma's already been through this, and so, I think we could use them as a really good pattern to follow. On your first question, I don't see this as supplanting what we're doing. The plan is to move ahead with attached houses and, and duplexes, and potentially even other needed changes, some things that have come up. And I'm not promising any of these, just pointing out, I've heard, you know, concerns about the PUD ordinance, for example, our minimum lot sizes, those pose challenges for developers. Those are things that we can continue to make progress on as we're developing this pilot program. So, I don't see it as an either-or.
Thank you. I'll add a couple of things. So, I've studied the Tacoma process, and it's actually two things. The pilot program predates the Home in Tacoma Project, which is the larger lift, the Comprehensive Plan lift, the ordinance changes, so forth. The pilot program, and I've experienced this, my day job is designing and manufacturing buildings, houses. And, and so, I've actually gone through the experience with the Tacoma Planning Department. It was, it was, first of all, very productive, very pleasant. It does put a burden of conditional use on the department, so its resources. But what we found is, as a, sitting down with a developer, as a designer, they were using as data collection. They would bring to a pre-development meeting more, you know, fire officials, so forth. And they were, they were studying this, this process, you know, along the way. So, it was really the education piece of it. And then, to your, to your question about, you know, limited number, what it really is, is by their council districts, they allowed five or six of every housing type. And then, when they reached that threshold, it was just reconsideration. So, it wasn't that they only would allow six in that district, they would just have that, that checkpoint for the council, for the department to say, what's working, what's not, is someone taking advantage of this in a way that we didn't anticipate. So, but it opened it up citywide, yeah.
It's opened up, it just slows it a little bit.
It just has that checkpoint that, okay, if five purple polka-dotted houses show up in a, in a district, maybe we need to put a purple polka dot, you know, restriction in there, right?
Gotcha.
But five of them happen, not 20. Because that's, that's the precedent setting, is what, you know, was experienced in Seattle. That by the time you catch something, there might be 100 projects in Seattle going on.
Okay, that's helpful. One, can I just mention one other thing real quick? So, Spencer mentioned the Spring Market and that we've had planning staff down there. I visited yesterday, and they've been getting a lot of really good input from folks who've been visiting. There's, I just want to make sure people know, because I think there's probably a little bit more eyeballs on this meeting than normally. There's one more left, so if folks want to go down on the 27th, I think it's 3:00. There's one more left, so if folks want to go down on the 27th, I think it's 3:00 to 7:00, and visit with our, our awesome planning staff who are down there, provide input. There's a, a lot of different things that you can, questions you can answer and input you can provide. So please go down, provide that input, and it helps us to make better decisions up here.
And I'll add, sorry, just, you can also go to shapingspokanehousing.com, and there's a link there where you can provide electronic feedback.
Oh, great.
So thank you for mentioning that.
And could you, the Spring Market is at the Pavilion?
At the Pavilion, yeah.
Okay, great. Other, we've got a little bit more time, but other comments for Plan Commission? Anything people from council want to see more of, less of? Any, any other input for Planning Commission? Anything more from Plan Commission members who haven't spoken yet?
I would say this probably is a little bit of an intimidating format for you all, so I appreciate the, just the flexibility. And according to Hanley, we're trying to get the briefing center where we used to meet up to a standard where we can have a hybrid meeting. So we're not there yet. But it is a little weird seeing y'all down there.
Yeah, yeah. But I think this, again, very, very helpful, and as slow as things have seemed to be since last June, when we said, all right, we're, we're serious, we're, we're doing this, we have the votes, it, it seems like the momentum is gaining, and it's, it all seems positive to me personally. So I really, I really appreciate it, and I, for... Councilmember Stratten?
I just want to recognize Spencer for kind of, you know, starting his job in February. He hit the ground running, drinking out of the fire hose, and then he had to deal with me, asking silly questions and trying to understand all of this. So I really appreciate your hard work, and the Plan Commission as well. Thank you.
But she understands centers and corridors now, Spencer. Thanks to you.
Spencer, every time you explain something to me, I understand it. So that's good.
All right, great. Well, thanks again so much for your work. You are, I believe, the hardest-working city commission and all volunteers, so thank you for, for your work on that. And you will improve our city for a generation, so I really appreciate that. Let's pivot. Checking, I, we're going to have two guests from the COC board. I see Dale there, and Robert Lippman, are you here? Robert there, I don't know you as well, Robert, so, great. So why don't you two come up to the front row, and...
Yes.
So we have two, two parts of this segment of our study session. We have a 25 minutes. One is, we're just going to look for some feedback from Dale and Robert, from the COC perspective. And then, secondly, and some questions and answers. And then, secondly, Councilmember Kinnear wants to technically introduce a resolution and say a few words about that, that will help, hopefully, improve the process of getting more low-barrier shelter beds in place. But to start off, and, and Dale and Robert, you can, you can just kind of both stand up and leave it up to you, but one, if you could just give us a little overview for our viewers, we got a lot of people, as Councilmember Cathcart, who aren't familiar with the COC. So just kind of tell us who, I know you're, again, all volunteers, what your normal job is, and how you get involved in reviewing RFPs, and then maybe just your thoughts about where we are at this point in terms of adding low-barrier shelter beds, and what you liked about what you saw of proposals, and what you think could be improved.
Well, hi, everybody. Thanks, council, for allowing us to be here. My name's Dale Breeze. I'm actually a Spokane County resident. I reside on just the west side of Spokane, right inside the county line, and have lots of homeless in my community right there. I mean, right on government way there, so. I'm actually a long-term member of the Spokane community, disabled, and, you know, I work part-time for Spokane Regional Health District. I actually have, as a peer navigator, lived experience on the COC board of homelessness. You know, I've been around this community in, in many different planning bodies and stages, and this process of how to help the homeless keeps appearing on us. I'm glad to hear that there's actually recognition to the amount of numbers that were down in units, because that helps, you know, I wish that, you know, in itself would be sort of the, the face-forward number, instead of blaming the homeless for the situations they're in based on, you know, like, they're drug addicts and things on that line. Because it's, it's sort of like, you know, the, a match, you know, to recognition with that. You know, I, I was asked to be on the COC board because I have been involved. I actually run for Spokane Regional Health District. I run an HIV/AIDS advisory board. So I know community planning, I know how to get feedback from the disabled populations, you know, of how, and how to listen, you know. One of the big things as a newly, sort of credentialed approach is the peer programs you're hearing, peer support, peer navigation and such. And so it's, it takes a different lens, and just, you know, I just went through that training myself, intentional peer support. It's, it makes us look and ask different questions of our fellow human, about not like what's wrong, but what happened to bring you to this situation? And so you lean in differently, because it's really trying to ascertain what the quality of life of somebody is, they're trying to ascertain, instead of what we're trying to project upon them. And sometimes it's really hard work, just because of the fact that it might not be what we might want, if somebody chooses not to be on medications, and it might take their life, you know, or maybe staying high or drunk. But yet, it's, it's a really reflective approach about how we can be non-judgmental and just trying to figure out how to keep things stable as they go. You know, this, this recent, so I'm the COC vice chair, okay? And so we had, so I was the one assigned to moderate the RFP process for this, you know, for the new shelter. It was really a quick ask of the COC RFP community, committee that has nine members on it. Spring break happened that week, I can only actually bring in seven individuals to actually do the review. I spent 22 hours of volunteer time that week, answering questions, you know, and just, you know, trying to stay moderate about it and not have any influence on it. We convened that, we got the, we got the RFP proposals on a, on a Friday at 5:00, I did. I sent them to the committee at 6:00, by 6:00, emailed out. We had till next, the following Thursday at 6:00 PM to get them back to the CHHS Department upstairs. That was a quick turnaround, with a lot of questions, without no budgets, without no, you know, reflection, location, no PIT count, and not anything wrong with CHHS that they didn't get these things, you know, because they are, you know, understaffed and undermanned, and, and there's a lot of pressure up there. And so, but yet, it was a lot to ask. And so the determination, I think that they, the RFP committee came out with the, the lead applicant, or the one that's chosen, but also with the recommendations of, let's look at all their alternatives within the community. Like with, you know, pallet structures, and leaning in for maybe a tent city even. I know it's not favorable, but yet, how do we do this and broaden the scope of how we actually address homelessness? It, it helped, actually helped me come up with something that I think, hearing the Planning Council, that should be included in this conversation. We as Americans are actually really mobile, okay? And we have the potential of being subjected to environmental events, health conditions, mental conditions, whatever, that could displace us from our homes, okay? And it's like, why aren't we asking the question in a different way, or this question? If you were to become in that situation, okay, Lord forbid, you might be able to go to a family member, or someone else, you know, a friend, but would you choose a car, an RV, a tent, a pallet, or maybe a shelter? Okay? That's a real choice, and that should be part of the planning of our community. Because people actually, we know that there's businesses that actually bring, allow people in their cars to stay there. We saw that in the PIT count, that there were, you know, in the North County, there was all these individuals. We should be bringing them in and having like parking, designating parking for them to feel safe in, because they're vulnerable out there. Or RVs, or tents, because shelters, you know, have their place, they've been wonderful, they, you know, actually with the, you know, sort of the support services around them. But yet, if we, if we expand our thought about how we can actually provide basic, you know, shelter and security, I, I was reflective on it myself, because I live in a, in a development, a mobile home park, 55 and older, that was actually created in the 70s. We haven't created much in that model since the 70s, okay? That's a, that was a tiny home kind of village in that, in economical. And so it's like, okay, pallet, if I had to do this again, I would probably choose the pallet, because I have neurological conditions that sometimes would not be, allow me to stay in my car. I have a car too. But it's like, those are decisions that we, any of us could be subjected to. And so the, moving ahead, because the, the, the piece about the conflict of interest that was put out into the, you know, the universe, the COC doesn't have any, we can talk about things. There was actually people abstained from voting, okay? And that, it was disheartening, because we're, we're really trying to have honest conversations about things, and it's like, wait a minute here, so I don't, it's like, I don't know how that happens, but that's, I think there's politics, I don't get into, into politics. But yet, it's like, how, because we have to move the community forward. And how do we heal? Because social healing is a part of coming out of a pandemic, okay? And we need leadership that actually, you know, sort of sets that model and that tone. And, you know, potential funding, pallets and such. How about challenging the community with maybe, or with a tax abatement, peeps for sponsoring a pallet home, okay? From our, you know, our residents out there that have homes, could we give a tax abatement? Beyond that, this is me being historical, before HUD came in with low-barrier housing, we actually had the opportunity, with Shelter Plus Care was one of the original HUD grants that were, was in this community. Individuals would get shelter at a reduced rate if they were in care services. I used to actually monitor that on, for the city of Spokane, you know, through a provider. And in individuals that would get from homelessness into a unit, they would actually be challenged to, you get $10 credit for every time you give an hour of volunteering, or $60 credit for every time you go see a doctor. Match that $240, you know, subsidy you're getting by being good-faith stewards within our community. I don't think that is a hard ask of even our homeless community. If there was a pallet structure or funding to be out there, is, could they, could they do a $25 donation, you know, to pay for a little bit? Because that's showing good faith, that's actually, you know, I don't see the shelter, I, I, no stones throwing, please, but I see the tent city as individuals trying to have good faith in our community, okay? They are out there, there's problems out there, sure, because we have individuals that we know that aren't good characters. But it's like, this whole piece about, they are actually keeping fire department response down, chasing little fires out in the woods with their camps, that's down. We know their sites. So actually, the pressure in my neighborhood, where there's a lot of tents in the woods, has been less because of the tent city. And so it's like, whoa, so giving them credit that they're trying to be a community within themselves, so that's really all I have to say. Questions? Yeah?
Well, yeah, you, you mentioned the, the conflict. I just want to make sure I understand. So what was explained to me is that there's a policy that says that those who are supposed to recuse themselves are not supposed to participate in the discussions. Is that accurate, or is that, have I been misled on that?
We, the COC board actually has discussions about things, they abstain at the vote.
And so the, but do you have an actual written policy?
That's the policy, yeah.
What you just stated is the policy?
That's, that's what we have been running with for years, yeah.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear, though, you can discuss, you just cannot vote?
We just can't vote, yeah.
Okay. If anybody's got a copy of the policy, I haven't seen it, I'd like to see it.
It's in our charter, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions?
Dale, that's very powerful, thank you. And you introduced some information that I was not aware of, so I really appreciate you sharing that. So thank you.
Okay.
And I just want to, I really appreciate it as well, and I am so sorry and disappointed the last couple days' events, that has had to start this whole thing over. And you guys are volunteers, and you're, and you're good people, and you care about the community. And I apologize that, I think that's been really unfortunate.
Thank you. I, I would recommend that if an RFP was to come out, go larger with it in scope, you know, suggest that. I mean, and just promote, because we have this one unique opportunity to go large. And so just, you know, I mean, I think that's where we need to really, you know, I mean, and, and actually, the, the question I asked, I think we should ask that of the homeless community. What do you prefer? Because it would really help ascertain if, you know, once we get the PIT numbers, you know, if it's 800 individuals, if we get 600 pallet homes sponsored or something, we could take a big bite of this out, or, you know, or location and such. And so that's just, you know, I can be a dreamer, but it's like, it seems like there's something there that we could take a larger bite out of this, you know? And just with, with, actually with the planning too, the Planning Commission, so.
So what's the plan now? They're going to reopen the RFP process?
Yeah, that's what was shared yesterday, is that another RFP would come out at a different time, yeah.
And then, is it going to be the COC, the same group that's going to go ahead and...
Don't know. You know, and, and, Mr. Cathcart, I want you to know, we did this as a formality. We're not needed. It's not a COC-funded portfolio, I mean, piece. This is just a formality to give our feedback. And I want you to know that, you know, because, we're, we're volunteers, okay? And the stress that was put unduly on even myself, I mean, because the media and things, and it's like, whoa, 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 I didn't sign up for this, I was trying to just moderate, you know, to give you feedback here. And, and it's just a formality. It wasn't in the portfolio of the COC. So I think it was a healthy attempt by the CHHS Department to actually lean towards us a little bit, as experts or concerned, you know, a body, yet it's a formality. It really, even if we would have made a recommendation, it comes down to you, you know? And so it's, it's one of those pieces about, you know, we can get into the, you know, did we or not? It's like, it's just a formality. And, and so I really respect that we need to, I mean, have this body. Am I taking too much time?
No, no.
Okay? Because here's the other thing that, you know, I mean, the city of Spokane has always taken the heat in this region for the dollars for the homeless. The COC board is a regional board, okay? And it, 12 incorporated cities. And, you know, dreamy Dale, it's like, the pallet home model might be something that we might put tentacles to our other localities. Because can we get faith-based organizations to put pallet homes there and sponsor, you know, and things, it's like, it's like, we, we could be creative here and encourage that. I don't know if, how your relationships with the other, you know, regional cities are, but think of that. It's like, and take some of the cost burden off the city of Spokane and actually place it, and maybe, you know, I, I would think some people that come from the country, you know, that are homeless out there, might choose to stay in their own localities instead of come to Spokane. Reduce those numbers, so.
Well, thank you for that. I have been using the term, we should be co-creating a shelter. Not only with the city, but the, our regional partners, and the people with lived experiences, and the people do the work. So I've also been in conversations with, I've said it before, DSHS plays a significant role in funding and housing opportunities. And I spoke with John Corello, and he's never been approached about housing, and they have money, and how to work through that. And we talk about capacity of services. So I spoke with providers. They want to do the work, but they are struggling also to meet the needs of the people they are currently serving. So really, what's our conversation going forward with providers to step into this arena to do this work? We need shelters, absolutely. forward with providers to step into this arena to do this work? We need shelters, absolutely. But our last two experiences with large shelters have not been very successful. Not at all. And we've all talked about the scatter site model. And then we go, well, we don't want it in our neighborhood. Well, there are mental health facilities throughout Spokane in every neighborhood that is coexisting with their neighbors, and treatment centers with their neighbors, 60 to 100. I'm one of them. I've been in Brown since 1975. I'm a great neighbor, servant type of people that are out there. They just really need fertile ground and stability to go forward, to be successful in this. So I challenge us, and I know we need something now, but we need to look at those smaller locations that we've been talking about for several years, that could be embedded in neighborhoods. And people feel like they belong because folks tell me, I live in Deer Park. I want to kind of stay in Deer Park. That's my neighborhood. That's how I know to get around. The folks who are in the valley want to stay in the valley. That's where, that's where their support systems are. So we have to acknowledge that, whether we want to or not, in order for us to meet the needs of the people we're trying to serve. Because we can build it, doesn't mean they're going to come. And we can't lock them up because they don't come. Because they haven't broken the law. So those are some real considerations. And again, the sustainability of this going forward. I've kind of joked about a tax. We tax everything else. Because the funding source we have now is inadequate to meet this need. And truly, it's a pass-through funding model. We get it from the feds and the state and some local, but it's a pass-through. Really, us always doing a special budget ordinance to meet a need, let's just look at those special budget ordinances, and let's budget for it going forward. I think that's our opportunity really to take a hard look. So I, I'm, I'm hopeful. And those 100 sites that everybody keeps talking about, that have been looked at, I, I don't know what those were as a council member, what part of the city they were looked at. I don't know how large they were. And the parameters that have been put on the shelters, we weren't, at least I wasn't, part of developing those parameters. So again, this partnership and co-creating will be critical for the success of our people, all of our people, homeless and citizens both.
I guess I have some frustrations with the process, simply because, you know, a month and a half ago, two months ago, it might have been in January, we sent the mayor a pretty scathing letter saying, you know, people are dying on the streets and it's your fault, was basically the tone of the letter. And the mayor proposed the situation, proposed a, a shelter site that would have allowed us to help a significant amount of folks who are living on the street to get off the street. We've heard testimony from a woman who literally, it was her dying wish to give us testimony. And in her dying wish, she talked about how she now had glasses because in a shelter or in a situation where she was unsheltered, she was the victim of domestic abuse and now required glasses to see. That same woman talked about how, once it got to a certain temperature, she was at, at risk of some serious medical issues because she'd been living outside for 29 years. There is, without a doubt, we, we need significantly more shelter space, and we all agree with that. My frustration with the entire process is, we continue to task the administration with impossible tasks. And that's why I'm upset right now. I thought the administration, which had, I believe the, the number was about 92 sites that they had visited, this one, there's no perfect site in the city. There's, there's not going to ever be a perfect site. And the model might be that, you know, these, these smaller scattered sites is where it's at. We know how long it takes to site one site. And we have seen that in this process. And now we're going to task the mayor and the administration with finding five, six, seven, eight of these sites? When we see the process of what it takes to do one?
It's not possible.
It's not possible. And this, right here, again, might not have been the best situation. But at least it was a step towards helping us to take people who are in very dangerous situations and get them out of that situation. People who wanted protection from, from others in the camp who were abusing them. People who wanted to get out of an area where drug dealers are preying on their vulnerabilities. Where we wanted to get people out of the elements so that they weren't dying in the cold, they weren't dying in the heat, they weren't dying of smoke inhalation. And so my question is, what exactly do we want the administration to do? Because it feels like we contradict ourselves at every step. And as I look through the things that we've asked of the administration, and they provide those things for us, then we say, well, that's not what we meant. How can any reasonable person understand what we're asking of them to do? This is my frustration. And I hope that when we, as a body, determine what we want, that when the administration gives us something along the lines of what we've asked for, that we don't then say no, for whatever reason. The cynic would obviously, you know, think that this could be a, a political move. I believe that we all care about people. And I believe that we all really want to see people in their, in their best situations to where we can get the wraparound services to them. I don't see however, how our actions are in line with, with what we've said are our values.
Can I just give you, you know, I think the outsider on that model that was proposed, I think could be, I think that space could have been planned in a healthier way, that would have bought more support overall. And but yeah, I think zoning came in, right? In zoning, which was best outside of, you know, but I think that overall, that site, because I went and toured it, I thought that site could have been planned better. Because pallet homes could be there, honestly. And, you know, and, and used in a healthier way. And so that was, I think that's where I think we can encourage that. If any site, come to, come to some experts and ask, how can we plan this in a healthier way? I think that would have been, you know, I mean, honestly, the best thing that could have happened. Ask the homeless, you know? Because if 100 homeless or 150 out there at Tent City says, I would take a pallet home if you put it in that parking lot, guess what? We're halfway there. Okay? That's, that's where, and so it's like, don't, we have to lean into asking the homeless of what they want. That's why that question I came up with. Yeah.
And pallet homes were a part of this plan, correct, at the tent site?
No.
I, I disagree. As we were discussing with, with Johnny and the admin, in that site, we had talked about in the parking lot, there being, there being pallet homes.
It was all inside. It was all inside.
That is significantly different because we specifically asked about pallet homes. And Eric Finch and Johnny Perkins both told us that in the parking lot, that there were going to be pallet homes, that that was part of the idea.
But that, what I just want to clarify, that was not the proposal you were shown.
Yeah.
You were told that, totally.
Yes.
Not the proposal they were forward to evaluate.
Yes. They weren't making it a pallet home community, but it was going to be a part of that site.
And Jonathan, that's why I came back with the resolution that included pallet homes. That is why we're talking about this today. So that we are being more flexible than just putting people in a building. We're not precluding that this building is not the right site. That's not what this discussion is about at all. This discussion is about what else can we do with this building, rather than just putting people in it? How do we program it? Do we use the outside for pallet homes? Do we use the outside for people who have running cars, that they want to live in their cars? So it's a discussion. We're not rejecting the site.
Yeah. I, I understand the discussion. I think my frustration is in the discussion because it feels as if we ask for one thing, it's provided, and then we say, well, that's actually not what we want. And so I would encourage all of us to, when we're doing this, I know one of the things that we're frustrated by is council, and I know the administration is frustrated by this as well, is that we feel as if we don't, we don't trust each other to do the work. You know, we're, we're frequently, you know, talking about how we need to put egos aside, and we need to listen to, to each other, and then things are proposed. And then it feels as if all that was just flowery talk and not any action we wanted to take in ourselves. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm obviously frustrated by the process, the same as everybody else. My frustrations might be different than others. But when we're talking about trusting one another, I trust that the, that the mayor cares deeply about the homeless. I trust the people that, you know, in the RFP process care deeply about the, the homeless. I care, you know, I believe that the continuum of care obviously cares deeply about the homeless, except for when it actually comes to taking action, and that we don't seem to trust each other. I guess that's a huge frustration for me.
And Dale, I just had to, because I, I think I also support this location. I've done everything I can with the administration to try to get it. We have not been presented a lease yet. So we don't, we have, it hasn't been presented to us yet as an official location. It's an idea. But now that the administration is going to redo the RFP, what we're going to talk about as a council is, to be very clear with the administration of like, what is the best practices? What would work best? So assuming this location still remains on the table, and they can get to a, an agreement on the lease payments, I'm just curious, again, having sat through and seen the proposals that you've seen, what you would, again, you've, you've touched on it, but I'll just give you one more time to say, these are the things you would like to see in a proposal that incorporated that location and any other additional locations going forward?
Well, I think, I, I think taking, you know, first of all, taking some individuals that are currently homeless there, and have them roadmap it a little bit. You know, in the tour I received, there was some homeless individual there, or formerly, I should say, and was really concerned about safety inside. Okay? That 250 is a larger number than any shelter we've ever had. And, you know, should there was models that were presented from Colorado Springs, and I think San Diego, like 600 number, and to comfort, you know, the trauma-informed approach, because, you know, that's a large number. And so there was talk about sort of segregating off by populations, like seniors, maybe if there's a wall that could be up, and seniors could go over here, you know, and then, you know, maybe some of the developmentally disabled individuals, if there's, you know, by criteria, maybe go to another. So there's not, lessen the predatory, predatory behaviors per se. And so that was just about the inside that was talked about versus, of course, more bathrooms, maybe windows, you know, I mean, but, but not, there was no discussion about the outside at all in that walkthrough. And so the outside, I think that layout, one of the, I went to the first press meeting, Presbyterian meeting on the tiny home villages from, you know, models. And one of the things that I really took from there was, and this is about maybe further DOT land, Department of Transportation land, but as a gardener, is that the individuals that actually got into their home, or got a key, they actually had a little raised bed. They actually planted seeds before they put furniture in. Okay? And so this therapeutic intervention about, and, you know, about belonging somewhere. And so there's no grass, there's nothing there, you know, so could maybe raised beds be brought in if there's pallets? You know, something for the community to be, you know, a little active with, to take care of, take pride within it. That's that match that I talked about, asking them to match a little bit. You know, maybe even becoming peer navigators. You see the Challenge Seattle model that Christian Gregor has, and that has a peer approach to, you know, at models. And we haven't really looked at that for, you know, the, the funding coming out of the legislature. And so how we can maybe use that and try it out in that setting. So that'd be, but really, bringing the providers together that are doing this work right now, and sort of, you know, getting their feedback about how to lay this out. It's going to be challenging because, you know, pallet homes are not favorable to everybody in the community. I want you to know that. I've talked about that, and I've had, I've had pushback. They're like, you're, because they're like, and there's some questions about, you know, inclement weather. It goes below, is there heaters in there? Is there air conditioners? But that's where the expandability about inside that facility is, it can go to 500, by the way, inside there, at a six-foot radius, which would be pandemic level for social distancing. I found that fascinating. Okay? That they had done that research and, you know, and, or, you know, and that's important because we just had that experience as a community. And maybe that's the new, you know, sort of set rate for any shelter in this community is a six-foot radius in case we have pandemic, any planning. But back to, you know, just, I, you know, bringing in the providers to help, the collaborative providers to that. And let me, let me back, and I'm going to backtrack to something about, if you're going to ask, RFP, the COC, yesterday, we had a meeting and said, if we're going to be, we need to have our own internal, like, guidance about if we're going to take on an RFP review outside the scope of our portfolio, what does that look like at respect to the volunteers? And so I want you to know, we discussed that, because it should be like a 30-day turnaround and not a week. So we can actually do due diligence, so we could, you know, speak on things and, you know, just be, and so that's one of the things, because it was really, we don't, I don't want, as a vice chair, I don't want bad energy in this community. I'm trying to move and really be socially healing in energies. And so, you know, but I think that's leadership, is that how to bring people together to look at the space, to plan the space, so we can help our fellow human that is homeless, that is in transition. So I think that's the bigger thing.
Councilmember Kinnear, and then Cathcart.
So I think we have time. The RFP process is going to restart. There isn't a lease. We have time to sort all this out. And there may not be a lease for quite a while. So until there's a lease, we cannot move in. I, I think the space, it's, there's enough flex that we can do a lot of things in there. I, I don't think it's a bad space. I think it's the best space they've found. And I know that they've, they've at least looked at 92, probably more than 92 spaces. So we have time. And again, we're not saying this is not a good space. That is not it. But just as Dale indicated, we have time now to really look at what is needed, what's going to work. Because the last thing we want to do is repeat two failed experiments, I'll call them, and have them fail again. That would be devastating with all the money we're spending. So I want to see us go forward, but thoughtfully. And, and as I said, we have time. Let's get it right this time.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. Well, are we going to discuss the resolution? Because I've got.
No, we are.
Plenty of things to add.
Excuse them. Oh, I don't know, Mr. Lippman, did you want to say anything?
I would, is he going to, are you going to present anything?
He's not going to present, but he's just.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity.
I, I'd like to ask Mr. Lippman what his background is, what he does in his day life.
Definitely. So part of my background is, I'm a COC board member who was a part of this volunteer process in, in vetting the, the RFP. My position on the board is representative of Spokane Homeless Coalition. So I've had a few of you guys up there with me and interviewed on, on stage. So again, glad to have you, have you a part of that coalition. It's a pretty big eclectic group of individuals that, that come through there. But my day job, to your question, is I work with Providence Community Clinic, the behavioral health support manager of, of that clinic over there on Second and Brown. So we primarily serve those experiencing chronic and transit homelessness. So that's a little bit about my background. And yeah, just kind of echoing what, what Dale was saying regarding the RFP process, you know, definitely going into this, the second round, definitely promoting more structure and transparency. I mean, that's what it kind of came down to as far as the timeframe associated with this RFP. And, and that goes into, to vetting that and the operations of it. I mean, the RFP itself seemed like a carbon copy of that, which was dispersed with Canon Shelter. Because I reviewed that RFP as well. So it just seemed like it was, I mean, going from a shelter of 80 capacity to the expectation of 250 plus, didn't seem realistic, given how the RFP was drafted and resubmitted, in my opinion. But yeah. Any other questions for me?
Councilmembers upon?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions for y'all. Thanks for coming and going through this long process. And appreciate everything that you're doing for our community. Just a couple of process questions, I guess. On the, we were told that the voting never was completed by the COC. Is that correct? I just want to, for, for, on the RFP, there was no, never a vote that you all had?
For the initial vote, when we kind of made it inconclusive, I believe, with it, and then we kind of set a benchmark to review it over the next couple of weeks. And then our first meeting was before kind of the, everything was released about, everything was going on. So it was that same day that report came out from, with the media.
And inconclusive, it was inconclusive because, what were the main?
Because of the lack of structure and transparency.
Another question I had is, this is a question I've been asking the administration over and over, is like, what are best practices on shelters and, and sizes in particular? And being presented to other cities, we haven't been presented that. I was, we've got a quick blurb, like, check out these cities. And then I was told to Google it myself, which I think is important to hear from people who know a lot about this topic. Do you know some best practices on size? Do you know some best practices on size of shelters?
I mean, this is such a new model for Spokane, a shelter of this size and magnitude. So I think the bandwidth within our community with the pre-existing operators who are operating shelters currently, it's kind of a stretch of their bandwidth. And I'm not, I don't want to speak on their behalf at all, but that's what it seems like from a perspective of someone who works the frontline. So for me, that operation component really needs to be vetted out as far as, you know, are we going to have kind of a shelter management and operational lead service provider who steps in with, you know, a set of MOUs associated with that, for that support that's needed internally within the shelter to get them connected to mental health resources or substance use, if that's the circumstance that individuals is experiencing or even engaging in healthcare as well, population health support, housing assistance. So I mean, you really need a pretty well-versed operator in providing those services. So I think that's what, what kind of was the hiccup and our discomfort is with the RFP committee, you know, scored, you know, that particular operator high. So when we were vetting that, it kind of led us to be just a little bit uncomfortable with their scope of services and integration of services and programs within, in their shelter internally. So I think that really needs to be sorted out and have a strong, experienced collaborative applicant for whoever that lead service provider is.
So I just want to clarify. So those MOUs with the actual service providers weren't part of the package?
They were part of one of them.
Okay.
At least what I read. So one of the proposals that we weren't voting on had MOUs associated with it.
Because that package was not related to this location, right?
And then I guess just nationally, what trend or shelter are we moving to as a nation in best practices for size of shelters and support services is?
Maybe, again, my, my scope is probably healthcare, population health, so I'm not in the sheltering.
I think if you look across the U.S., you're going to see a mixed bag about how communities are responding with shelters. And, you know, some communities are really leaning into the, you know, sort of the inside shelter. And that's for the individual that might need more assistance, that is, you know, assisted living capacity and assessing that upfront versus the pallet home is a little bit more independent or a tent is more independent. And so I think you're going to, you would see that, communities are actually seeing that, you know, that layout and understanding that a little bit better. You know, because one of the things that, working with homeless right now myself, I find fascinating is some of them don't want to be the burden, they want others to go first. So if there's an apartment up, they want somebody else to get it before themselves, even though they might have a condition. And so, and it's like, so, you know, it's like, well, I, could I do that? But yet, you know, but then also what is really appropriately needed if they did get into, you know, you know, if they had a tent available or a pallet or a shelter bed? So, but, you know, I think the trauma-informed piece is really important in understanding that.
And one thing to that too, I think we really need to be cautious about generalizing what other shelter systems are doing nationally, because each community is very specific in each circumstance that they're dealing with. So yes, other communities are doing great things, but Spokane is a pretty engaged community when it comes to this, at least with the workforce.
And then I just had another question from the, from COC side or the Coalition for Homeless. Was your input included in creating the criteria for what kind of shelter should look like?
For the RFP?
Yeah. I mean, just like the mayor came up with her criteria about it has to be this many square feet, this many people, this away from schools. Were you asked about that?
Again, from what I gleaned out, it was a carbon copy of what was submitted for the Canon Shelter. So as far as our input as the coalition, no, nothing, nothing was-
More on that, yeah. I know that might be an administration question, but I was just wondering if you, before the RFP went out, were asked, hey, what, what would an ideal shelter look like here in our community? And here's what we think, and here, do you have feedback for us?
That would have been ideal for the structure.
I honestly think we're in response mode about trying to find anything that is a structure that would accept, you know, honestly. I think that's where, I'm not giving anybody, but I think that's some of the energy out there about trying to resolve the inclement weather issue, people dying on the streets. And so how do we, how do we mitigate that a little bit when there's, there is not much property available? Because, you know, the 50 to 60-bed model that had, you know, was really talked about within the tour that I, of the site was, I, all I kept thinking about was, we need 10 of those. If we can't find one for this, how are we going to find 10? You know, with, when people don't want it in their backyard? So that's, you know, I mean, so I think there's a responsive piece that, how do we mitigate? I don't know how to mitigate that, but-
I got thoughts on that, but I'll save it for the resolution.
All right. Go ahead. So I'm going to, we're over time, but it's super important. And so I'm going to move us to the resolution. I just want to thank both of you for coming today specifically, but all your work and your compatriots' work, volunteer to try to keep us moving forward. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Resolution, Councilmember Kinnear.
Resolution. And everything that I was going to say, Councilmember Wilson, he stole my thunder. So I'm not going to go off on, and Councilmember Bingel, so. However, so after our meeting Monday night, I started thinking about all the testimony that we had and what this, what we actually need for our low-income homeless population. And I called up council president Tuesday morning, I said, I have an idea. And I started talking about all the things that you see on this resolution. And he said, well, I have that idea too. And we melded our thoughts to what you see here. It is not meant as a final copy, it's meant to a lucid conversation. So I would like to hear how we would like to go forward with this, given the testimony that we heard today from our COC people. So what, I'm sorry, I'm kind of losing my voice. What would we like to see? Again, this is not to exclude the shelter. I think the shelter is a fine location. And I also think it's a good space because we are going to need flex shelter when we have smoke, heat, too, cold, whatever it is. We need that flex space. So I think in that regard, it's good. But how do we want to ask the mayor going forward what it should look like and who it should accommodate and how it should accommodate them, given what we've heard today? So do you want to add?
Nope, but I, I know Councilmember Cathcart already told us he has some comments, so yeah, so go ahead.
Well, a few things. I mean, I think there's some practical considerations. The administration has already made it clear, and I fully agree, that we should not be putting shelters in residential or commercial districts. And that's not here. And so I think that has to be added here as part of the requirement. The other part of this is, if we're going to limit these to 120, and I don't disagree that that might be best practice, but again, there's practical and cost considerations. We would need at least three of these to address the illegal camp in East Central and have an opportunity for those folks to move to a different location. I don't know where you're going to find three shelters in the next few weeks. And so I think that that puts us in a really bad position. We have, you know, six-figure impacts from criminal activity around that camp. And so we have to, have to find a solution, and it's got to be pretty darn immediate. And so that's one of the opportunities with this shelter site, is that we can address that immediately, and it's not going to kick that can down the road. Also on here, that's not listed here, is proximity to schools. It does call for, actually, it should be close to certain schools, but, you know, SEC already came down and made it clear they don't want anything in their neighborhood. And so that is kind of in conflict here. But the mayor has said that she's not going to cite something near a school. So we should think about that, too. So now, as we start to narrow this down, if we had a map in front of us and we started to limit residential, commercial, schools, you're, you need space to, you know, many of these spaces, because you're only accommodating up to 120.
No, that's shelter beds. That doesn't include pallets or people wanting to live in their car.
Well, and, but the same thing. I mean, you're going to have to have these fine locations. If we're going to do, and again, I don't support a single-site pallet shelter. I think this has to be a citywide code. And I think it's got to be something that everybody could theoretically participate in. But if you're going to find a single site where you're going to do this, you're going to have the same problems, if not worse, because it's going to be an outdoor model. And you're going to have even more impacts, just like we're seeing with the camp in East Central. It'd be very similar to that. And so I think we have to think through all of these things and make sure that we're keeping our community safe. You know, I think the, the site that we've identified right now in our district, Councilmember Bingel and myself, I don't think we love the idea that it's in our district. In fact, it's very frustrating because we have an abundance of shelters in our district already. And so this sort of, to me, represents kind of the final and best in terms of District One. The mayor has said that after this, she is not citing another in District One. So we're going to see multiple shelters popping up in Districts Two and Three as a result of this, if that's what happens. So I just think these are all considerations we have to think about. We have a very short time. If you remember last year, we had 100-degree weather in June. Right now, we're not going to get this shelter open until June, if it opens. So we're going to be behind the council's ordinance from last year yet again. And we, you know, so we could take action Monday, be done. But the thing is, we have to be really thoughtful, but we also have to move quick. And I don't know that this necessarily allows us to do, to do either as it's, as it's drafted.
And so this is about the shelter that we're talking about. We're not saying, don't use this shelter. I'm not saying, don't use the shelter.
No, but you're saying it can only be 100 people. So now we have to find two more shelters immediately.
We can, well, yes, or we can put pallets in that space. There's enough space.
In what, which space?
Inside?
The outside space.
Parking lot.
I mean, you could fit-
Parking lot.
-a dozen or two maybe, but that's not, that's not getting us to address the camp.
I think you could fit probably more than that. But nonetheless, it's a start. And the other piece is, and the mayor indicated this as well, you can ask people to go to, into this space, you can move them off that Wash Dot land, they don't have to go. They can be cited, but they don't have to go in with 250 of their close personal friends.
No, that, that's true, and that's their choice.
That is part of the, that is what we were hearing was, people don't want to be jammed in. And we've seen two failures already with HOC and with the convention center. That is, that is my concern.
The other, the other, the other piece too is just money. I mean, we're, we're staring down the barrel of a $13 million deficit right now in the city's general fund. And, and I don't know how you pay for these things. I mean, yeah, we could take some money out of ARPA and do some more capital, but you're going to have ongoing operations. Where is that money going to come from? Maybe we, maybe there's a new tax the city proposes and, and maybe the voters will, will go for it, but those are all maybes. So how do you pay for multiple shelters? I mean, this shelter site is going to cost, you know, I think, I think the actual building, if we'd have bought it, was three and a half million. So over, over five years, I think the cost is probably with the TIs, I think it's probably a million dollars or something. I mean, how do we do that, multiple shelters around the city right now?
Well, this is going to cost-
Where's the money come from?
This is going to cost a lot, too. And we don't know what it's going to cost.
We haven't been proposed yet.
The lease hasn't-
And where's the money coming from for the proposal?
We've already allocated three and a half. So I'm guessing that's the assumption, is that it comes out of that three and a half.
But we still haven't gotten that proposal yet.
But we don't know what that is. That's the big question mark.
And the other, I just wanted to say this, even the RFP that the mayor's now canceled doesn't have enough numbers for the Camp Hope. That, that doesn't either, just, Councilmember Bingel.
Yeah. Looking through the resolution, there is a lot on here that, that I do agree with. You know, the 24/7 security, dedicated space for the wraparound, service providers, flexible space to increase, you know, storage on site. I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with a lot of this. I do have a question. Where did the 120 number come from?
That was not my number.
That was just, that was my number. That was just a number. It just, it seemed-
It could be 150. I mean-
Sure.
It just, 250 just seemed really too high, because we've done it and it's failed.
Okay.
And I didn't want to repeat our mistakes. What I would suggest in the, because of time, is people submit their changes, or if you want to scrap it completely, but say, yeah, here's, here's the changes I would like and send it to Jacoby via email. So that we can either go forward, if we don't have the votes, I'm not going to put it on the internet.
Yeah. I guess my, my other question with that is, is there a difference between 250 people being inside or 120 being inside, 100 outside in pallet homes, another 100 in their RVs at that same site? Is there a difference in those numbers just because they're in different parts of that property?
I think to those people, there would be, yeah.
All of that's up in the air, just, just a bit. I mean, this is a discussion starter, and it also has further, again, it's based on the testimony that we got, that 250 in a one room was going to be too much. We haven't seen any plans that would be different. It adds in additional 100 each for a drive-in place, you know, fenced, secured, so that it's not like Camp Hope where there is no, no hard barrier between people coming in and out, and another one for additional pallet beds. So it's, it's bringing that forward to help inform whatever this next generation RFP is. But we have to start the conversation and then-
Totally.
So, so yeah.
Yeah, and this is just being a part of that, because again, as, as I stated earlier, is that it feels as if we give them guidelines, they follow those guidelines, and then we determine, well, that's, that's not actually what we wanted. And so part of this conversation is, I do see a lot of good in this. And so refining that to where they have an actual actionable plan, because as we all know, I mean, if it's taken us five months to get through this one, five months from now, it's October, and it's going to be, it's going to be super cold.
I, I'm going to push back on one thing.
Okay.
So one guideline we gave last year was, do not close a low-barrier shelter without replacing. They closed 100 beds, the most popular 100 beds, coed, 24/7, and they did not replace it. If they had replaced it at that time, the first Camp Hope protest was under 100 people. I don't think we would be in this situation. So I, I'm pushing back that they have followed it in the past. I totally support working with the administration and encouraging this location and other things, but I think there needs to be some reciprocity on that. So I'm just pushing back on that narrative just a little bit.
Without a doubt. And I can't, I don't affect the administration, though, you know, this is the body that I'm a part of. And so, you know, whether, whether, you know, they raise their standards or not, is up to them. We as a body, I know we all, you know, want to be the best that we can be, yeah.
Totally fair. I just wanted to make that point. Councilmember Zepon?
Did you want to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I just want to go to the point where you said we haven't given any guidelines. This would formalize it, which I think maybe would be helpful. But I think when they've presented and talked with us, we have given them guidelines on smaller dispersed shelters. And there was a criteria that was created that we expressed a lot of concern about, and a lot of providers have expressed concern about, that was decided by the administration. And then they said, well, there's nowhere else in the world, nowhere else in Spokane we can locate the shelter based on the criteria we created. So that was their criteria. I think this would help inform their criteria for the next RFP, and that we could focus on what are best practices, what can save us money in the long term, because spending a lot of money on a large shelter that isn't going to be successful is going to cost taxpayers more money in the long term. And in the near term, too. So I think this, this helps with that, yeah.
Can I just have one quick?
Yes. Then we have one more very quick-
I have to, I have to say this. So when we, when there was the plan to cite the, the way-out shelter in the Emerson Garfield neighborhood, one of the things that was important, not only to the neighborhood, but to the two council members at that time that represented that neighborhood, was communication. And we started along the lines of having open meetings, not only with the neighborhoods, but the businesses and the residents, folks that were going to be affected by that way-out shelter. Now, if you remember, that started out as a overnight emergency shelter that was opened in an emergency. And so the neighborhood was pretty traumatized by that whole thing. What I want to say is that that neighborhood has finally settled down. It's a way-out shelter now. We've been talking about good neighbor agreements. We pushed the administration to help us with good neighbor agreements, that we could, when we were having sightings in neighborhoods, have something for businesses, the shelters and the neighborhood to know who to call, whose responsibility was what. It was a learning process for me. It was frustrating. It was a learning process for the businesses in Emerson Garfield and the residents. We all survived it. And so there's a lot to learn from that. And I get a little- And I get a little cranky when I hear, we're not going to cite any of this near a neighborhood or a school. Well, we already did that. It wasn't perfect, but now I get notes from neighbors saying, you know, it's not so bad. The Salvation Army's doing a good job. I haven't heard from businesses in a while with the issues. I know there was a lot of issues there when it was a shelter. So I guess my point is, is that this really is about communicating, being honest, and sitting down and just getting to the point, because nobody wants this to fail. I don't want it to fail. This isn't a political issue for me at all. This is a communication, and having the, the guts to stand up and be honest about it, you know? I mean, I've shared my, what I want for services, what, you know, training, we could partner with programs at community colleges for training, there are so many great ideas out there, but so many people have been shut out. And I'm just saying that we survived in the Emerson Garfield neighborhood, I hope, but we need to continue that, and we need to push for that communication, because we're going to sit here for the next, you know, year and a half for me, and we're still going to be at the same spot if we just can't open up and pull the people in that need to be talked about at the beginning and get the concerns. Never once, I've had to, to share what my concerns are. No one's come to me and said, what concerns do you have about this, this process? And so I just want to be real clear, we can do this, but it's going to take a lot of communication, and we all have to be honest.
21 months.
21 months. What did I say? Year and a half.
All right. Let's, let's go super quick, because we're way over time, and we have one more small thing, but Councilmember Cathcart, and then Councilmember Zepon.
Yeah, just, just to comment on something that Councilmember Stratton brought up. So I, the, the way-out shelter is no longer a low-barrier shelter, it's now a transitional housing facility. So I think that's part of the reason that you no longer see those impacts. The other is, when it was a low-barrier shelter, it was a disaster. I mean, the impacts were insane. And, and that's why you don't want to cite something like that in that area. Now, if we had a robust good neighbor agreement policy in place that put some pretty strict requirements in there, then perhaps we could revisit that conversation around citing shelters in more vulnerable locations. But until that's in place, I don't even think you can talk about that. The way-out shelter is example number one of how it just simply does not work.
How many beds was that?
And that's why we're not talking about it, we're talking about it in a heavy industrial area.
I'm not sure.
Yep. Councilmember Zepon?
Oh, I was just wondering, are we going to talk about the rapid capital acquisition?
Yes.
Okay, oh wait, that was my comment.
Go ahead. Okay. All right. So moving, oh, well, first thing I would say, we are going to try to get a version of this resolution posted for the public online, but get us, any, any comments you have, get to council, well, get it to Jacoby.
Yeah.
By end of business today. That's not your last opportunity, but that will inform whatever the next draft is that goes online, and then we can continue through Monday to, and probably, and look for a suspension of the rules. So that's on that. But now, another resolution, I wanted to end on a positive point.
This is a positive one, guys. This is a request, a resolution requesting this, that the city take action to identify potential properties that may be appropriate for rapid capital acquisition program. Now, you remember that last year, we lost out on that money, because we weren't prepared. So we need to be prepared to identify 30%. We've got Catholic charities ready, everybody's lined up, ready to go, so we need to be ready to go, too. And that's what this is about. It's not controversial, it's simply asking the city to work with whatever entity to identify sites, so that we are ready to just go screaming forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, so I was, I guess I was supportive last year. I mean, I don't really understand why we have to pass this resolution again. I mean, we basically, 0061 from last year, the city council pledges its support for local rapid capital housing acquisition applications, pledges to rapidly approve any necessary budgetary allocations. I feel like we've already done this, so I don't know that we need to vote again.
Because we're not, we're not prepared this time, again. It was very last minute, and we need to be prepared with 30%.
Well, that's, that's my question. So where does, again, $13 million deficit, where, are we taking it out of ARPA?
It's, that's what we have to discuss, but nonetheless, we cannot let this pass.
And then where do we pay for the operations? Because I, I was supportive last year, I even supported the Catholic charities request, but I, but as soon as they came back and said it was going to be $1 million a year, that's when I was like, that doesn't.
So the good news is, in the latest version of this program, there is operational money.
Yes.
So this, this is, you know, we approved $3 million up last time, and so this is repurposing that money that we allocated, that we didn't actually use it. But the beauty of the new program is, from, and the guidance that we got from Commerce was that we needed to do at least 30% match, that's why we used a 30%, and that there is operations money, which was a huge impediment to us. There's also, last I heard, there were at least three buildings, one was an 88-unit building, and then a 15-unit and a 17-unit. So there are more buildings, there, you know, just a few weeks ago there weren't, but now there are. So this is really just to encourage our nonprofits locally, and also go on record, again, kind of formally, for Commerce, so that in their bid package or their application, they'll have something fresh. So it's just.
I wouldn't have done it had I not thought it was necessary, because I, I don't have a lot of time on my hands, as any of you do.
Yeah. I just want to add that I think this is incredibly, incredibly important. When you talk to the providers, and I asked them, hey, what are your thoughts about the shelter? And they said, what are we missing out on? And we're missing out on this rapid capital acquisition, which is matched by the state, and that we could get up to 500 beds quickly with this process, which would lower the capacity that we need in shelters, so we don't need five more buildings. We have permanent supportive housing, which is more effective, long-term cost-effective, and this is state money. And they've been told that there's nobody organizing them, coming together to do that, and that the mayor has not reached out to the providers, or the county, or the state to do that. I believe Representative Ruchelli is organizing a group, and the mayor and the administration are on board with that now.
Perfect.
But it was, they've been reaching out for a while now. So I think this is important, that we go out there and say, we want to support this, and this is our role as a council to do that.
So then this is more a message to Commerce, you know? We, we want that money, we're in.
We're committed to 30% match, $3 million, yep. All right. Thanks, everyone, for all your input and conversation and participation. Thanks, everyone who came in person or watching online, really appreciate the conversation. Thank you, administration, for all the work that you're doing on this topic, we'll continue to work together. Take care, and we are adjourned. Have a good weekend, take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of somebody else. Be well.